New experience, it's a new opportunity for everyone to work together. And it's up to us to make it work. The citizens of Sheffield decided that the committee system is what they wanted, and it's up to all of us to make it work. So I'm hoping that this is going to enable that ready for me. So if I can just start with some housekeeping, please. I would just like to advise everyone about social distancing at all times. Face coverings should be worn unless seated. But if you feel more comfortable wearing a face covering while you're seated, that's acceptable as well. There is hand sanitizer available in our entryways. If we can remain seated as much as possible, that would be helpful. And follow any safety signage throughout the building when moving around. In the event of a fire, please take instruction from officers. If I can ask that, mobile phones are either switched off or on silent. And that, just to remind everyone, that the meeting will be webcast. And with that in mind, if when we're speaking, when we've finished, we can turn, if we could please remind everyone to turn your microphones off. Otherwise, it can be confusing for the webcam to move around the room. What I am going to propose, if it's okay, is that during the meeting, if it does last for a while, that we might want to take a comfort break partway through, just for five minutes, in case anyone needs to get water or use the facilities. But we can, we can work that out as we go through. But if anybody would like to do that, just let me know and we'll look at that. Thank you. So over to Rachel. Rachel, do we have any apologies for absence, please? Yes, we do. We have one apology, and it's from councillor Colin Ross. And as substitute, we've got councillor Huggins. Thank you. Thank you. Do we have any declarations of interest? While we're here, though, can we just do a quick? I'm just going to jump out of the agenda for a second. Can we go around and introduce ourselves? If members of the public are watching, I just think it'd be really good for them to know who's in the room. So can I just start over here, please?
Well, my name's Peter Garber. I'm councillor in Leatheredge and Sharrow.
Hello, I'm Christine Gilligan, and I'm councillor in Hillsborough.
Hello, I'm Tim Huggins. I'm councillor for Crookston Crossfall.
Hello, I'm councillor Penny Baker, councillor for Stannington.
Councillor Simon Clement Jones, councillor for Beechley and Greenham.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Julie Greco for Stoppsbridge and Paddan.
Good afternoon, I'm councillor Kate McDonald, and I'm councillor for Gleedless Valley. And I'm also here with my cooperative executive lead for finance and resources.
Hi, councillors here in As for the Donald Ward.
Councillor Brian Lodge from Burnley Ward.
Alice Nicholson, policy and improvement officer, supporting this transitional committee.
Thank you. And for those who don't know, I'm councillor Dondell, councillor for Shire Green and Brightside, and I'm chairing this meeting today.
I'm Rachel Marshall, and I'm principal committee secretary, working under Democratic Services.
Thank you. So on page nine, we've got the minutes from the last meeting. And although this is the first meeting, the minutes are actually from full council, where we were all elected onto this committee. Can we agree that they are a true record? Thank you. At this point in the meeting, I would like to make a recommendation for an urgent agenda item to look at our future approach to priority budgeting. Could everyone agree that, please? Thank you. So now I'd like to bring in officers for the next agenda item for the presentation around the introduction to transition committees, please. Okay, thanks. So that was going to be Alice that does that, thank you.
This report was included in the agenda along with all the other transitional committees. Just to update you all and to share with you a briefing that you may already have seen that was shared at the governance committee. And it just sets out what is intended by transitional committees and also what is not intended by transitional committees this year. I think it's worth just drawing attention, if you want, to page 33 is the main part of the item. It goes on 34 and 35. Just to say that they are advisory, you are advisory committee. They are temporary, not shadow cabinet, with a core focus to kind of improve how cross-party engagement works and decision making. And as based to pilot new ways of working, they are, so it's just for this year, as we try and, as you try and move forward to a new committee system as of May next year for decision making. And it's about just using the transitional committees to test things. But I think the point to make is whilst it might feel you're testing, you're not, you are hearing about being involved in, being asked advice by the executive, cooperative executive on core important matters. So whilst it is a transition committee that is temporary this year, it's not that the business is temporary or not valued at all. It's incredibly important, and it's an incredibly important way of testing how things might work in a committee system for decision making. And all the items on the agendas that you will see are very important items that are high on the list for the cooperative executive. But I think also in terms of issues around sort of policy development. Scrutiny still exists. Scrutiny is there for the holding to account, more of the check and balance, and to call in any decisions that have been made by cooperative executive. Because the cooperative executive is still the decision-making body this municipal year.
Thank you, Alice. With that in mind, as we are the transition committee and we are here to trial and try and find out how this might work, what I would like to offer to all members is an opportunity, following on from these public meetings, an opportunity for us to debrief, so that you as members can also share your experiences of this transition committees, have any questions, and feed into the future development of future committees. So I don't know how you'd like to do that, whether that would be following directly after this meeting, for just a 10-minute roundup, or whether or not you'd like me to facilitate alternative dialogue in a different forum, whether that be via email or a face-to-face meeting, so that as members of the governance committee, we can feed your views in at that point as well. So I'm open to suggestions on that from members. Like I said, we've all got a voice and we've all got a purpose for being here. So I'm very open to that, if anybody wants to have a chat about that. Has anybody got any suggestions they'd just like to raise now, or are we able to move on? Councillor Garber.
Thank you. I'd suggest that we use emails rather than anything else. Two reasons. One, obviously, it's going to be quite late when we finish. And a lot of people have family responsibilities, et cetera. And the other is, things can occur to you after the meeting. And it's useful to have that thinking space, so that you can get some questions in after that. So I think for that, from those two points of view, I think it would be useful to use emails rather than a debrief immediately after the meeting.
Thank you. Can we just record that? Thank you.
Sorry, Chair, for my, I mean, do you want a prompt from myself or Dawn for that? Just to encourage you to send something back.
Thank you. So we'll move on now to business and the urgent agenda item of future approach to priority budgeting. Thank you, councillor McDonald, for coming in. And if we can have our officers as well, please.
Shall I kick off while everybody's started settling down? So thank you very much for giving us an opportunity on the agenda today. We've been, three of us have been going around all the transitional committees. If you recall, one of the things that's on the one-year plan is developing priority budget arrangements. But that's a medium-term aim, not just a one-year achievement potentially. But likewise, the transition committees, you're moving towards a very different way of working. So what we wanted to do today is to come here and start a conversation with you about priorities and how our priorities are actually reflected in budget decisions in the future. There's an opportunity to shape it this year, but it will actually inform it the more formal way, we're going to be doing that in a much more formal way in future years as well. So I just wanted to give you an introduction to the process. Eugene's going to say a bit about the current financial context. And then Laurie's going to talk about the more, the policy-related context. And we're happy, we're actually, we're here in, it's a conversation, and we're here to listen to your views about what the priorities might be. We appreciate the timing, it's not ideal, but we are where we are, aren't we, all of us, in this process? So thank you again. Over to Eugene.
Thanks, everyone. It's just been pointed out to me that kind of, what I said at the, one of the other committees the other day has been in the Star, and it's interesting that I've just noticed the tweets that the Star have kindly put to support, there's going to be a lot of changes in council services, and this is why. And then there's a picture of me. So it's okay, the budget's all my fault. But actually, part of the, part of the context, seriously, is, hopefully you've seen in the Co-op Exec Report that took in September, we have a significant potential overspend this year of £40 million. And that report does set out the context, but just to rehearse it, which is, you know, six, nine months ago, we're in a relatively stable position, not great after 10 years of austerity, but we were keeping our heads above water. And actually, last year, although Covid pressures, particularly on social care but elsewhere, impacted significantly on our budget, we had gross costs of about £80 million. There was, there was, to be fair, a significant amount of government support last year that allowed us to have a balanced position and be relatively stable. Not all councils manage that. What the report set out is that since then, a lot of Covid pressures have continued, partly in our income, planning, leisure, but most particularly around social care and humanitarian issues. And as the report set out, the £40 million, around over £30 million of our problems are on social care, children's cost pressures, including price of accommodation and complexity of cases, ongoing impact from the pandemic in adult social care, including issues like we didn't put people in residential care homes that kept at home on more expensive packages than would normally be the case for home care. So we're having to think about all those issues. And in that context, obviously, the government announcement of, of the fixing of social care, which actually, what it does is, it announces money for the health service that we might get a slice of in later years. But that money we might get is to cover costs that we, there will probably be additional costs around what they're doing about capping people's care fees, et cetera. So actually, the announcement did absolutely nothing to provide funding or a solution to the current problems that we, not just us, this is a national problem. We have a particularly intense version of it, having both children's and arrows pressures, but did nothing to provide any funding towards the current pressures. And those pressures are not just funding pressures. People will know there are significant pressures on the, particularly on the adult social care labour market because of general labour market shortages, the stress that people have had in the last two years, and the fact that people can get higher wages in less difficult and ungraced jobs. And that, again, is an issue that is across the piece. So that report's dealing with that. Obviously, that provides a really difficult context for this year's budgeting to next year. But back to the link to priorities, we've got the one-year plan, thinking forward to next year and the changes to committees. That, that difficulty around the budgets actually makes it all the more important that we have a clear sense of our priorities to guide the allocation of our budgets. It should always be that way around. Our priorities and uncertainties around what we want to achieve for the residents of Sheffield should guide the budget. So when we are looking at the difficult issues in the budget, that's what we will be trying to think about. And as Kate said, we are not formally involving transitional committees in the process, but there is a, there is an advisory capacity in your views on what those priorities should be. Because the normal process will apply to this year's budget. Talk to the other committees about this. So scrutiny will still exist, individual briefings for groups through to a full council meeting in March. But looking forward to next year, we will obviously be doing the budget in a different way and building it up through committees. And that is partly what we wanted an early talk about, what that might mean with you. Thanks, I'll hand over to Laurie.
Thank you, Chair. And just to finish off, really, that obviously, the one-year plan published a little bit earlier in the summer, it sets out really aspirations and the corporate executives' aspirations to have, not only a three- to five-year corporate plan, to start, starting to think about the administration's priorities and the council's priorities going forward. Something that we, I think, we all know we need to start getting into, because it provides some shape for decision-making for future years, but also a budget that's tied to those priorities as well. So part of that priority-led budgeting has to be connected to what the city council wants to achieve and what the city wants to achieve in that period of time. So this is really an opportunity to kickstart that conversation. Now, clearly, we're not going to get to, we're not going, we're not, our expectations are that we're going to sit here and absolutely nail all these things in the next 20 minutes. We know that's not real. But starting that conversation now is really, is a really important way into shaping the budget process for this year, but also for coming, for coming years. So one of the things we suggested to other committees was, even if we have a braver conversation here, you might want to maybe work with Alice, who's the, who's the policy officer lead for this, this committee, and maybe with the Chair as well, and produce like a short note that comes back from the members of this committee to actually say, here's some of the key things we think could be key priorities from our council kind of theme. And including in that, not only things that you think are critical priorities, but potentially things that could be areas where we could deprioritise it within that same space as well. So it's directly aligned to the things we want to achieve in the one-year plan, but also some of the learning that we're going to have to get into, end the practice we're going to have to get into, ready for transition to committee system next year as well. So I won't say very much more, really, other than to just sort of open it up, really, if that's all right, Chair, just in terms of having a bit of a conversation.
Thank you, Laurie. I am going to open it up to questions, but I just have one. With regards to feedback from members, do you have a timeline of where you'd like that back from?
I think from the other committees, what we've said is, obviously, the budget process runs from, is going to be intensive now until December time, really. As the usual process will follow, as we go out, we do engagement with citizens, with VCF sector, with the business community as well. And I think there's a real opportunity for members to play into that space as well. So it doesn't have to be next week, but over the next coming months will be really helpful, actually.
Thank you. So I'm going to open up for questions. Does anybody have any questions for councillor McDonald and officers? I'm sorry, I've not got my glasses on. Well, they are, but they're not working very well. Yeah, would you like to ask a question?
Yeah, sorry, it's, it's not really going to be a question. It's probably going to be more of a statement, but with the, with the Chair's forbearance, hopefully, yeah. I mean, essentially, for me, obviously, I've been involved in actual budgets and shadow budgets for the last 12 years. Minus the three years when I got booted out, obviously. So really, for me, the, I mean, if I can kind of describe my experience of the process, from, from the, certainly from the, from the opposition side, it's very much a carve-out-a-pot-of-money, and those are the, those are the choices that you and your group can go away and make. I mean, and simply because of the resource of officer time, I think, is that, that's been, been only really the way we can do it. What I'd, so obviously, the kind of wider policy tended to be, you know, part of the narrative added afterwards. Whereas what I'd hope a process that came through these committee systems would have would be that we would be able to look at, at the policy. So, you know, there's, that's where the politics are for us, and I'm sure for everyone else. You know, in terms of looking at, you know, what we do with SIL. So it's not about trying to get more SIL or get more what have you. It's about, you know, the priorities within SIL. A lot of the things around local area committees, certainly, I've got very strong views on how they should work and how they should integrate with, with all council departments, processes, meetings, everything else, and certainly the budget in terms of that, in terms of that ground up. So, you know, what I'd, I'd like to see is, is a much more expanded process that gave, and obviously, with, with this process, you know, it is hopefully going to be less, less oppositional. So there will be more officer resource to share between, between everyone to get the best result for Sheffield, really, and to promote the best kind of democracy we've got. So, yeah, that's me, thank you.
Can I come back or not? Sorry, yeah, I'm just going to bring you back in. Thanks. Yeah, if you would like to, if you'd like to comment on that, yeah.
That's exactly why we're doing it. It's actually to be policy-based, that's where our priorities will come from. And actually, use our, what our diminishing resources are to support our key policies. So that's what we're starting to do, Simon, exactly why we're here. It's not going to, we're not going to do it in year one, and we're not coming at this stage with a formalistic process. There are all sorts of technical ways of doing it, that's not what we're doing. We're just sort of talking to people, A, if you've got any priorities in the first place, and B, so that we can get used to the idea and how the committee system will be working in the future, and how choices about how we spend our money will be working in the future.
Thank you, councillor Garber.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just thinking, there may be areas where we need to invest more money in order to save money, if that makes sense. Making, making the services that we're discussing here better, so that money is saved down the line. I take it those are the sorts of things that you'll be looking at as well?
Absolutely, that, that is something we've, we have absolutely done in previous years, and that will be part of the consideration. I mean, obviously, as resources tighten, it gets harder to find the piggy bank of money to do the investment, but where we can, yes, that's, that's, that's very much what we're trying to build into our approach.
Sorry, I was going to come back in on the last item and then get a last, last question from councillor Clement Jones, I didn't get a chance, actually. I was going to say that actually, no, no, it wasn't your guess, I was slow off the mark. What I was going to say was actually, as part of that contribution back to the budget process, ideas like that about how we think about the way of working next year, and just playing that through in the kind of contribution would be really helpful, not only for the budget process, but actually as part of the contribution to the governance committee as well, and the thinking about the ways of working. And with my policy hat on as well, thinking about the policy resource we're going to need to support that process as well. So that's really helpful. Thank you.
I'd just like to make one last point, and we do appreciate that you're, well, we are at a very, very early stage in, in working as a committee. But subsequently, this conversation will be taking place at a later stage of the committee's development, and actually, we'll be developing over a period of time in the work that you undertake. So it's a bit of an artificial situation as well, and I do appreciate that. But as we've tried to explain to you, it's about establishing that dialogue, the principles, the understanding of it, and also in the short term, giving you an opportunity to feedback to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. I think what I'm going to suggest at this point is that I would ask for an action here of Alice to email our all members to find out if anyone is interested in meeting with myself and Alice, to draw up some recommendations for the officers with regards to where we see this going. So I wouldn't want you to volunteer now and put your hands up to say that this is what you're interested in. But I imagine through the committee system that we're going to start to create some subgroups and working groups to focus on individual items. So anyone interested, if you can respond to Alice, then myself and Alice will be happy to meet with you via Zoom or just collate your information, and then we can bring that back here for officers, if that's all right? Thank you. Does anyone else have any more questions or comments on this item? Wow, that were pretty painless. I thought that were going to go on for quite a while. But thank you very much for coming in. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the customer experience, improving our customer services. We have been sent out in advance. I hope everyone got the papers in advance, but it is going to be on, on the screens as well for anyone that's interested. So if we can just have officers come through, please. I think this might be councillor McDonald again.
Would you like me to introduce it, Chair? Yes, please. Thank you. As a cooperative executive lead member, which relating to this committee, one of the things I thought was really important was to put some effort and focus into improving our customer services. Work has taken place in the past, work is taking place at the moment. But I think there's a really good opportunity for this committee to take a lead in actually shaping this and championing it as well. So I don't want to say much about it, because I know that they've got a presentation, but we're not starting from scratch. I know there's been briefing for the Chair and so on as well, but we're really welcome actually enhanced support and focus from this committee on this really vital area of the council's work. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to introduce yourselves, and then we're happy to take the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mark Bennett, director of HR and Customer Services.
Rob Markham, Lead Project Manager, BCIS.
Thank you, if you'd like to present.
Thank you, and thanks for the opportunity to come along and talk to this committee about, as councillor McDonald said, some of the work that we've been undertaking over the last couple of years. But really, hopefully, to help us shape how we deal with some of the challenges going forward. We, we know we have some specific issues around the customer services that we provide to our residents, and, you know, I'm not here to ignore some of those things. But actually, what I hope today's discussion can help us shape is, is a future policy approach to how we, how we change our interaction with customers and residents in the city, so that we can meet their needs. And hopefully, the presentation will, will give some food for thought and perhaps some steer us to some of the things that we need to be thinking about doing. So this, this first slide, which I know is very busy and you won't be able to read, is really just trying to present an illustration of, of the range of services that we provide to residents. There's a, there's a vast breadth and depth of queries and teams and services that are ultimately have some form of interface or relationship with customers, residents, businesses in the city. The customer contact centre itself deals with about 800,000 phone queries a year. And pre-pandemic, the first-point contact centre in the city centre had about 100,000 visitors coming through the doors. So it's, it's a big operation, it's a complex operation. I think that's the, that's the point that I'm trying to make, really. During 2019, we undertook quite a comprehensive survey of residents' views around the information. And there is a lot more depth to that than I'm actually presenting through, through these slides. But I think from, from those discussions, from that feedback, which was, which was done online, it was done face-to-face through survey, and in addition, there was actually some customer focus groups. So we got some depth to some of those responses. And there were some really important points of feedback that came through. Perhaps unsurprisingly, people, customers, residents, want us to help us in whatever way that they feel that they need us to resolve their query. There was a sense coming back from the feedback that actually, the way that we construct the services that we provide are often done from a perspective of what meets the council's needs best, rather than actually what meets their needs. And perhaps to illustrate that point, they might have to make more than one contact to the council to resolve multiple different queries. They might have to contact different teams at different times, different phone numbers. There was, there was a lot of feedback about, about people finding it difficult to get through on the telephone lines, and a definite sense that they want to be able to do more things online. And although, although they don't talk in this language, I think what came through from that feedback was that the way that we measure services, the way that we judge how well we're performing as an organisation, isn't really an illustration of how well customers' needs are being met. So we might, we might monitor how many phone calls are being answered. are being answered, we're not actually asking the question about whether somebody's needs are being met. And just to illustrate a couple of points of feedback that we've had, you know, it's feedback around people having to wait a long time to get through, people not being able to do things at a time that meets their needs, people who fed back and said that they'd like to be able to do everything in one call, if they got the opportunity to do that, that they felt that we needed to engage more and listen more to customers. They want to get involved, they wanted to help us shape how we design some of our services. As councillor McDonald said, and as I've said myself, we haven't been doing nothing, and actually even over the last 18 months and during the pandemic, we've continued to make improvements to the services that we provide, and have recently, within the last 12 months, implemented a new IT system, customer relationship management system, which allows us to provide better access to information. We've implemented a new telephony system as well. We have had some limited success in terms of the use of the council website and designing some of that around what customers have told us would better meet their needs. We've designed and redesigned more customer-friendly online forms. We have aimed to think about our services from an end-to-end perspective. So where a particular, where the resolution to a particular issue might need more than one part of the council to get involved, that actually the process that the customer sees is just a seamless join-up of that and not having to interact. And there are some successes in that, around, I think highways was one particular area where we've done some work. We've redeveloped forms around fostering libraries, and we have improved our capabilities for customers to make payments to the council. I think this next slide is just here to try and import and highlight the importance of the use of the web. I think the web needs to be part of the strategy that we have in terms of dealing with customer queries, customer contacts. It isn't by any means the only solution, but I think just to draw out a point, which again came through from the customer feedback and the survey that we did, 66% of people who come into one of our reception points have previously been on the web to try and resolve their query, and haven't been able to do so. So 66% of people have come in face-to-face, have tried to resolve that query face-to-face. 78% of people who end up on one of the council's phone lines have equally tried to resolve their query online and have not been able to. And that not being able to is either because they've not been able to navigate the websites, not been able, they've not been able to find the information they need, or actually that just service isn't available online. Okay, so what can we do? So the following few slides really is an attempt to make some suggestions for some improvements that I think we need to make, and then to attempt to set some ambition for the future. I think in terms of the suggested approach to the improvement, I think we need to be thinking about putting our customers and our frontline staff at the centre of any redesign of the services. We need to be taking the perspective of our customers and thinking about how we provide, what it is they need, and not from a silo or service-based perspective. Got to make it easier for customers to talk to us, to get the services that they need whenever they need them. Got to take advantage of those new technologies that are talked about. We've implemented these new systems, we've really now got to make them work better for us and better for residents. We've got to make sure that when we're contacted, customers can deal with everything that they would need to deal with in one go ideally. We've got to think about how we can enable more customers to deal with their tasks online, and to make that experience better than it is currently. And again, the design of services is based on the user and not the organisation needs. So these next couple of slides really just try to set some ambition from different perspectives. Firstly, you know, an online user, perhaps somebody that might have moved into the city, they can find the information that they need about how to inform the council of the house they've moved into. They might choose to set up an account with us and register their information, so that actually the council can contact them about services that they might need to know about. They can interact with us through a PC, smartphone, tablet. They can actually apply for things like resident parking permits, they can find out information about bin collections. It's an intuitive service that meets the needs of somebody that's just newly moved into the city. There's an in-person perspective, so where somebody comes into the council, they're bringing documents that they'll be required, that we need to have sight of, but these can be self-scanned, they don't have to queue, and somebody, one of the council staff having to take those documents away to be scanned, they can do it themselves and upload them. We'd like to think that there are council staff available that can interact with people that have perhaps come into the first point and helped them, guided them to resolve their queries, perhaps show them some of the online services that they might need to use. Through telephony, that actually, they know that they can deal with some of their queries online, but where they need to talk to somebody, they can make contact with somebody on the phone easier, there's not a long wait. And they can deal with more complex queries and have somebody there that's able to understand their needs, to be able to provide advice and guidance, and actually resolve those queries. If any of you've ever spent any time in the customer contact centre, you realise that the range of queries that the customer contact staff are dealing with can be incredibly complex and challenging at times, and actually making sure that we've got people on the end of those calls that are able to deal with all of that's really important. So our frontline staff need access to the information that they need. They need the technology which gives them all of the information about that customer, and they need to know where they can go and find answers if they don't have that readily available, where they need advice and support from other council departments, they can make contact with those departments easier, and if necessary. If on those occasions where inquiries need to be passed to another department, that's done in a way that the customer is clear about what has happened and what will happen next. And from a partner perspective, we have worked with a wide range of partners across the city, and they understand the role of the council, and they understand how they can refer some people that they might be involved in to the right place, so that we can start to connect services around residents in a way that, again, meets residents' needs. So what do we think doing some of those things, what difference do we think doing some of those things will make? Well, we certainly hope that it will reduce complaints, and people that have to feel that they need to contact the council to chase up queries because they haven't been resolved first time. They should reduce call times, and they'll be able to fix more problems first time. Our staff are better equipped to respond to customer needs, and they've got information that they need to make their jobs easier. There are less disjointed visits to the website, actually the website is designed in a way that's more intuitive and meets their needs. We should be meaning that people don't have to travel to some of our face-to-face contact points, because they can resolve their queries in a way that meets their needs at a time that meets their needs. And we're basically making more options available for people. If we were to think about how we might construct work to deliver some of that ambition, these would be our suggestion of how you might go about doing that. You could think about these as specific work streams, or project or programme themes in terms of making improvements, but there's certainly ongoing work to understand customer needs. There's work to be done in terms of actually helping our staff understand their role and how they need to support customers. There's work to be done to design and redesign services, similarly with face-to-face customer contact, making that experience better and making it easier, and making it trying to get to a point where residents only need to come and talk to us on a face-to-face basis, where that's their choice and that's the best way of being able to resolve their query. We need to be thinking about implementing single customer accounts, so actually building accounts of customer information, which helps us make it easier for residents, it makes it easier for us to deal with queries. And we need to continue to invest in the digital I said at the very outset, sorry, that concludes the presentation, I did say at the very outset that the work that we've been doing around this kind of improvement has been ongoing for some time and doesn't stop, and I thought it'd just also be worth highlighting work that we are currently on with. So there's currently work that's been scoped around actually how we could improve the customer experience of payments, benefits, thinking about how we can join up the revenues and benefit services with housing and adult social care, and actually how we can create a better policy approach to customer payments and debt. We're quite well on the way now with a project around improving how we handle customer complaints, and that's about making sure that we've got a clearer picture of an organisation of the complaints that we receive, but also actually how we use complaint information to feed into service improvement. There's a lot of work happening currently to try and improve the interface between the customer service front end and the repairs and maintenance service, to try and deal with some of the challenges that we've got there, where we're seeing quite high volumes of queries, and some quite significant backlog, so trying to, there's a series of improvements happening there. And it feels like, given the amount of feedback that we've got from residents, that big customer service that we undertook in 2019, that now would be a really good opportunity to revisit, to refresh, and to restate our customer standards and expectations. And I'd invite this committee to help us to do that. I think a new set of customer standards that we can use at the heart of all future service design for the customer contact centre, but for all services in the council would be hugely beneficial, and this would be an opportunity to ensure that some of the design principles that are important to you, they're important to us, are captured within those standards. Thank you for your time. I hope that was a useful introduction. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mark. I'll open the floor to questions. So if we can have, if you'd like to go first and then Penny, who?
Thank you very much for that. I think the aspirations are very good, and I welcome those. I'm a relatively new councillor, so I'm still getting my feet under the table and learning how it all works. But one thing I didn't see on your final list of points was about the call centre, or whatever you want to call it, and investing in there, because my experience is people come to me when they can't get the answer they want online because it's too complex, and then they can't get through to anybody in the call centre to answer it, and they've sent numerous emails, they've been on the phone for hours and hours and never get through, and they kind of come to me in desperation because they don't know where to go. So I'd like to see how you're going to make the call centre better. So, I mean, I've phoned it several times, you know, it goes, you're 28th in the queue, and half an hour later, you're 26th in the queue, and you can't stay all day on the phone. So that's, I think, one of the big issues, I think, would help if people felt they could come through with complex questions and get an acknowledgement. Or if they send an email, they get a response that acknowledges that they've done it, because they're what I've picked up. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to take another question and then respond, Mark? Is that all right? Councillor Baker?
Thank you, councillor Dale. Actually, it's on the same topic. I agree with Christine that the majority of casework I get is when people have spent a lot of time trying to get through to somebody on the telephone, and they don't use email. And we have to remember that there are still a considerable number of people who are not confident enough to do business on email. They might use it to email family and friends, but to use it on things that matter to them, they don't have the confidence to do it, even if they've got that facility. I think the biggest complaint has always been the length of time to answering a question, and that is always hard, because it's down to resources. And from somebody who's worked and managed a small, much smaller but a call centre, a lot of the problems are that the people at the end of the phone don't stay that long, the staff, they don't stay that long. By the time you've trained them up, things have changed, and you've got to give them additional training. So it's hard for them to keep up to date. Obviously, having an up-to-date system and a laptop in front of them so they can access as things now in a modern day helps, but it's not the answer to everything. Particularly, we're quite good in Sheffield and all the cities that are dealing with different languages. What we're not very good with is dealing with the people who are hard of hearing or hard of understanding. And the clarity of the way staff speak, and the speed of which staff speak, sometimes is quite a major thing. And we need to take this into consideration. I've not seen it on any of the advice, anywhere, or any of the guidance given to staff, but it doesn't take much to just slow down a bit and listen a bit harder, and then you might save another half a dozen phone calls and get it done a lot quicker. I agree that we should prioritise getting things clear online, so people can do things quickly and efficiently themselves, but I also think we need to extend the hours that we can take calls from members of the public, because they work shift systems, et cetera, like everybody else. And if you've just come in off nights, and you find that you've got a problem, and you either go without sleep that day, or you end up having very limited sleep later on, it's quite a biggie. And we've still got quite a lot of shift workers in Sheffield, particularly in the health service, so we need to consider that as well. I don't think it's really important that calls are answered within a reasonable period of time, and are dealt with in a deformative way, and that staff are not afraid to say, "I can't answer that question, but I will find out, and I or somebody else will get back to you", and that they have guidelines of which, how quickly they do that. Because that means that you've got a true and accurate service, even if you've got a lack of knowledge from an individual. It helps fill in the gaps, feed the picture, and make us feel a lot more professional. As a whole, I really welcome this report, and I think the basis in here are extremely good. I think when it gets to doing it on the ground, you've got problems, you've got resource problems, you've got information problems, and you've got people's opinion of what they're going to get on the end of the phone at the moment as well. I'm not going to ring the council unless I've got all day to do it. We need to break that, and we need to give people an effective, accessible telephone opportunity to communicate with us. But as a whole, I have to say, Chair, really good report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Baker. I've got two more people, or three more people that like to come in. Would you like to just respond to that, or are you happy to carry on?
Shall I respond to the call wait times and issues like that? Because I think there's a consistent theme there, and, you know, I think it's, I can't not sit here and acknowledge that there are some significant challenges around the performance, and kind of coming out of the pandemic, if that's where we are now, I'm sure it is, but kind of sort of returning, certainly returning the customer services But kind of sort of returning, certainly returning the customer services more back to what it used to look like. I think we've realised that actually customers' expectations have shifted again and we probably haven't kept up. I think the point I would make about what the potential solutions to some of the call wait issues are and Councillor Baker's description of some of the challenges around turnover and training and things are absolutely accurate. But the things that would make the best difference to call wait times and not just more staff. I mean, of course, that would help. But when resources are challenged, that's never going to be an easy answer. The better answer, the answer that I hope, the kind of approach I'm trying to advocate and perhaps some reinvigoration into this is that it has to be a change to the way that the whole organisation works. We've got to deal with queries first time so that people don't call back, so that people aren't going back into backlogs. We're struggling to answer this. I know I should be able to answer this question definitively, but it's not straightforward as you might think. But we estimate about 30% of phone queries that come into the service are people calling back to check up on whether their query's been dealt with, to get a progress update. If we could take that volume or we could take 10 or 20% of that volume out of the total number of calls, that would make a significant difference. The other thing that we've really got to get better at as an organisation is where queries span multiple services. What is happening currently is that the person that receives the call is then responsible for having to make contact with other parts of the organisation, to get information, to bring that back and then respond to the query. That's probably not the most efficient use of people's time. And actually, we'd sometimes be better off connecting the customer with the person that has all of the information that could provide a full answer rather than the contact centre providing what is sometimes a bit of a go-between role. So if we can think about how we redesign services so that we can design some of those things out of the process, we would reduce the call volumes without a doubt and we would reduce call wait times for residents. So I think that's why I'm suggesting that a new approach, a new strategy around customer improvement, a new set of customer standards actually, I think would hopefully be really beneficial for us.
If I could just expand upon that slightly. Just want to pick up on some of the concerns that members of the public have raised when we've discussed some of these concepts with them. This endeavour absolutely isn't meant as a kind of channel shift to force people online if they're not comfortable or not able to do so. But I think as Mark highlighted, what we'd instead want to do is give people choices of how they'd most conveniently be able to do things and hopefully avoid creating situations where they feel they have to ring up. So we did encounter some people who fed back that they'd received a letter from the council, weren't clear on what that meant and their reason for calling us is that we haven't communicated effectively enough with them. So hopefully, in those kind of situations, if we can improve our information and communication, we can avoid situations where people have to ring. And that should very help us with the call waiting times and mean that people on the phones can better spend their time helping the people who do need to have a more involved conversation.
Thank you. Councillor Garbutt?
Thank you, Chair. I'm finding this a really useful presentation and it's making me think about all sorts of different things. Do we have data on which services are most in demand and are the peak and trough times? And I suppose you could do that across all the means of communication. So, you know, telephonic, online or in person. So that's the first one. The other thing that's occurring to me is that, and I asked a question in the previous presentation about investing now in order to save later. So it seems to me that what we're asking for here is an upskilling of those people on the end of the telephone line so that they will be better able to handle the calls in one go, which is what you're asking for here. And is that an unrealistic ask? Would that result in higher pay for those people and therefore maybe not? You know, something that may not be doable? Yeah, I'll leave it at that for the moment.
Thank you. Can I take another question and then, yeah, so Councillor Grogg?
Thank you, Chair. You said right at the beginning of the presentation, which I think we do need to welcome and is really good news for the council, that we did some consultation a while ago. So I think it is really timely that we now do get on with this. And I'm quite excited about the idea of having some new customer standards that we can share that across the council. I think it's really important that we make sure that we still have a number of ways the public can get in touch with the council. In my own ward, I know that, you know, 23% of people in the ward are not digitally enabled. So immediately, you know, those people will be contacting the council either by, you know, going into an office in person or by using the telephone, that's, you know, before we even start. So it's important that whichever way you choose to contact the council, the standard is there. I think it's also really important for the staff. I've spent some time in the call centre. I've spent some time in other call centres as well. I've never actually worked in one. I've only ever observed, but it is demanding work and it can be pretty demoralising for them as well. So I think this is an opportunity to upskill staff, to show them their true value and make sure that they understand the level of service that we want to deliver as a council. And I think that in doing that, you know, the list of things, right at the very beginning of your presentation, I think it's important that we try and make it so that it's just one place, whatever your query is. And then picking up on Penny's point, if you can't get back to that person, you know how to get round the system so that the appropriate person can get back to them. It's just far too archaic if, you know, I've got to ring up children's services for this and, you know, repairs for this and council tax for that. It's just far too time-consuming, you know, complex. And it's wasting our time as well as members of the public's time as well. So, yeah, let's get going with it, I would say. Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to answer those questions, thank you.
Firstly, just to respond on the questions around data. I'm actually back here next week, I think, for an Audit and Standards Committee where we're presenting some data around call volumes across various different strands. So I think that information has probably just been published around what some of the performance measures are and where we're at. And like I say, some of that highlights that performance isn't where we need it to be. And I think the challenge around how we go about making those improvements is part of why I welcome so much this opportunity here today. There are very few quick fixes in any of what we need to do, unfortunately. The upskilling staff, I think, is one of those issues, actually. I think that we can broaden the range of queries that staff can deal with. I don't think we should ever expect that we are going to have staff that are expert in every field. And if you think about that first slide that I put up, it's too broad, it's too unrealistic. But what I would say is I do think we do have too many specialist staff at the moment. And we've kind of created the need for some of those staff to be specialists because of the way that we design the services around them. So, you know, again, repair staff is a really good example of where they actually need a pretty detailed understanding of the repair service, but their knowledge only goes so far. And when their knowledge stops, we then need to engage with the service. And I think there's got to be a better way of working out what that balance of responsibility is and where that sits. The systems that we use will certainly do certainly help. I mean, the Customer Relationship Management System, the CRM system, is already helping in so much as it makes more information available to the call handlers in a more intuitive way. It does open up actually lots of opportunities as well for us to work differently, for us to do things like more callbacks where actually we're proactively returning calls, to actually allow people to contact us and do online chats. And something's called natural language, which is basically you just, you say the service that you want and you are automatically redirected without actually having to go through a person. To be honest, the kind of stuff that we probably all interface with through various different organisations already. I do think we've got a bit of catching up to do in terms of not having to go out and buy new systems because I think we've got the systems we need. I think it's about how we use those systems. And I think more importantly, actually, it's about how we then design the services to make the best use of the systems we've got. Pick up comments around making sure that we've got the range of channels available, sorry, channels, that's a bit... Yeah, the various different contact routes for residents or customers. I think it's vitally important. And I think if we get some of this right, we can actually think about where we're then placing our staffing resource. So, you know, if we can, if we ever do get to a point of reducing call volumes, actually, we can then invest some of that staffing resource into supporting the web so that we've got a better web. We can actually have people, in our first point, who are floorwalking and dealing with queries when people are coming in rather than having to deal with people behind a desk. These are some of the ambitions that I think we should rightly set because actually, again, I think lots of other organisations and lots of other councils are already working in this way.
Thank you. Just two more people to come in now and I think we'll have a bit of a conversation leading on from that. Councillor Lodge?
Yeah, thanks. Working in a contact centre, managing people in a contact centre, you don't hide into nothing in a lot of things in there because you have a lot of people that will contact and no matter how long they're waiting, when they get through, they want to take, as long as they want to take to get their problem solved. So it's tricky in there. But I think there are some good news stories, as you reported, that come out there. It's interesting, some of the things, and I know I was talking about this with you two and a half, three years ago, and it's taken a while to get to this position. But it is good to see that there are some changes coming through. It's very difficult, and I say it's commenting back to points that were amazing there, that the contact centre provides a great background for anybody who wants to come and work in the council. So in effect, you're sort of doing an induction for anybody who wants to work anywhere else in the council because you touch every department. So it's always going to be a turnover of staffing then. And, you know, I think everybody recognises that's worked. And I can see Councillor Baker over there nodding. And anybody who's worked in that environment, you know, you lose people and we do for where I work in a rail contact centre. But how do you see the recruitment of people going through? Because we hear a lot of stories around issues around number of people in there. Has Covid, has the impact of Covid started to reduce? Are we getting people back in so we can tackle and deal with some of these things? We hear stories, and most of the contacts I get from constituents, and I was out in the ward last night and someone was saying about housing repairs and how long it takes to get through. Is the getting through the initial, or is the housing repairs a separate thing? You've got specialists, but you need to multi-skill? And it's just trying to get that balance of things right? And I suppose it's following on from a question before about where's the volume of calls coming through? And do we need to be putting a bit more targeted resource in some areas? And do you feel all services offer the full support? And that's probably a rhetorical question that you don't want to answer. Thanks, Chair.
Thanks, Mark. Do you want to answer that and then I'll bring in Councillor McDonald?
Certainly. So you're absolutely right. We are a fantastic induction for people to move on to other roles in the council and a great pipeline into many other roles and opportunities across the organisation. And we do sometimes struggle to retain staff. If Paul Taylor, the head of customer services, was here today, he'd talk about some of the work that we're doing around some of the apprenticeship routes in there and about some of the kind of the career pathways that we're trying to develop so that actually people that want a career in customer services actually can see an entry point and a way of being able to progress through. Because that's probably not as clear as it could be. So somebody whose job title is also the director of HR. And around recruitment, I think we have seen some challenges. I think a lot of service sector industries have seen challenges around recruitment. You know, we are competing with some of the same. We've had to get more creative in our approach. We've actually just gone through the latest round of recruitment. I think we've just recruited 12 individuals to fill some gaps. And I think we've done that by trialling an approach of CV only. So normally we go through the sort of standard council application form and we've done this approach through individuals using CVs and actually looking at transferable skills rather than expecting them to describe how they've done X, Y and Z as a requirement of the job. And it's been quite successful. We've actually, we've started to, I think we've identified a core of people that, again, want to work in customer services rather than just want to work in the council. So we'll see how that, I mean, it's very early days in that, so we'll see how it goes. The question I don't want to answer, I'll have a go at. I mean, I think it'd be fair to say, you know, and again, I know there have been conversations in scrutiny committees around repairs and maintenance particularly. I would say the relationship between the customer service team and the repairs team is good. We are focused on trying to find some solutions to the current challenges. There are some really long-term difficult things to deal with. But I think there are some shorter-term solutions that we've got to put in place to get through some of the current backlogs, to get through some of the peaks in calls that we've got. We've just recently moved to taking calls over the weekend so that we can not have a massive backlog of calls on a Monday morning, which is typically what we get. So we're trying some new things, but it's slow progress. The relationship is genuinely good. I think, some of you have heard me say this before, I don't think anybody in the council sets out with a view in mind that they're going to create service that doesn't meet their customers' needs. But what often happens is they are only thinking about that service design from the perspective of their service. And what we've got to drive is something that actually allows us to look at how we look at that across the whole range of services that we provide as a council and that we've got some really clear and really consistent standards that we can all work to, that we can all sign up to. Because I think that's where some of the frustrations come, where people see things that are disjointed. You know, it takes a lot longer to get through to this service than it does to that service. Or there's a big handoff or a big wait once I've done this. I think being more consistent around that, I think, would be really, really helpful. So actually, you know, I described work where we were looking at things like customer payments and benefits. That would be a piece of work that's not just looking at one customer group, but it's actually looking across, it's looking across revenues and benefits, it's looking across housing and it's looking across adult social care. So rather than looking at it from a service perspective, we're saying, look, all of those services deal with large volumes of payments into the council. So let's try and do that from a consistent way from that perspective rather than from a service perspective.
Thank you. Just briefly.
Thanks, Chair. It was just more of a comment really about, you're saying, the recruitment. Because I know there are a lot more of the contact centres opening in Sheffield. First group have just opened a big one and it resulted in a loss of employees from somewhere going in there because it's easy to commute and get around to things these days. So it's just, I know there are problems out there and I just wondered whether that had impacted on you as well. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. I'm going to bring Councillor McDonald in and then Councillor Huggan and then we'll end questions there, if that's okay.
With your indulgence, Chair, mine isn't a question, it's a comment on some of the things I've been hearing. So first of all, we've got some fantastic staff. I went to the Customer Champions event on Friday, a virtual one. And we've got some great staff who, not only do they do their day jobs well, but they're great team members and they innovate and they use their own initiative to do stuff that's... innovate, and they use their own initiative to do stuff that's brilliant for people in Sheffield. So I think that's a big asset, and, and that we can build on that. It's very difficult, it's very easy actually for all of this to become a sort of a negative story, but it isn't. We have some great staff, and we do some great things, and we need to do more of that. The second point I wanted to make really was that, from all the questions, the great questions and the points that people have been making and the responses, there's no single bullet that's going to fix all of this. So we have to actually have a whole systems approach to it. And I know that's technical jargon, but what it means actually, we better be said, a whole council approach. So, you know, we need to be able to sort of join up, join up all the great stuff that we actually do. And I think some of that's around the systems that we use, and, and how we communicate. And I think this bit of, the suggestion about having standards, consistent standards, I think that would be an excellent idea, because it would, it would be the same across all departments in the council, and also would help people to understand what to expect, because somebody mentioned that we need to raise expectations and, and reputations and stuff like that as well. So, so that would be one, one way to get into this. And I suppose the final point I'd like to do is actually suggest that, if you haven't been, it'd be a good idea to, to, to go and visit the, the centre, obviously appropriately, with, you know, social distancing and all of that as well, because I think that would give you a, a really good sense of the, the, not somewhat, well, yes, the pressure that the staff work under, and the range of things, and how good they are at dealing with some distressed people, maybe angry people, and, and so on as well. But, because I thought you made a good point, Penny, about people being patient and stuff like that. And many of our staff actually are. So it'd be really good if, if you really want to get into this, to, to go and, 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 and visit the, the contact centre, give you a good understand, understanding of that as well. So those were the, really just the key points that, that we have got. You know, things aren't working the way we want them to. We need to actually do stuff which means that if we've got much better offer on, on, on our internet, then, and how we do things, then, then that will take some pressure off the, off, off the, the call centre. If we get things right first time, that'll take more pressure off it. So that's win-win situation, really, if we can get each bit of that right. Takes more pressure off the, the, the call centre itself, that ends up, I think, at the end of the process, to be honest, when people are frustrated and, and so on as well. And, and we get things right first time. So I think there's a lot to go for. I don't think it's rocket science in terms of being able to do it, but we need to actually pick it off and get, get on with it. So I'm really looking forward to, to your support and, and input into particularly the stuff around the customer standards and, and how we actually improve. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Huggan?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, because part, part of it is, because, you know, you, you talked, you talked briefly about silos in here, but one of the things, you know, obviously, in, that comes up time and again, is in terms of housing repairs. And so some part of it's got to be empowerment. So you have a customer service, but they've got to also have the ability to be, you know, be, be, to, to, to keep checking up and keep making sure that these things are happening in that way. And so whether, and it's, it's whether, whether the, the, the tenants of Sheffield council, they need to have a dedicated line there, that, because that's, I'm, I'm sure that's the bulk of, of where a lot of, or, you know, a lot of the telephone queries are, because people, you know, their first thought when there is a, when they've got what they consider a crisis, is pick up the phone rather than say, well, actually, I'll have a little look on the internet, and then send, send it by email, because they want to feel that they're empowered that way. And so it's sort of a bit of empowering parts of staff, and then being able to move those resources as you deal with it, so that you can deal with it that way. Because, because it's, it's just making sure that as part of the service, that we seem to be flexible enough, but that we also care enough about some of the things that people, because of the most, because, you know, just what I would consider, things like where you're applying for your, you know, for parking permits, or, or, or for your bin stickers, et cetera. Yeah, that's, I wouldn't mind betting that the vast majority, that's online. You know, done, done that way, filling the form, here's our address, want this, here's the payment. And that's, that's done very easy. Whereas my, you know, just my anecdotal is that the, you know, it's like repairs, and people consider, they'll be, that'll be when they're picking up the phone, and they need to know that they're, they're, they're right, you know, that they're going to be taken seriously on the top of the queue, and whether we need to look at, you know, in terms of telephone numbers, whether it's like a separate number or whatever, but it's all coming to the same service. But then the people that are dealing with those are empowered more to chase up things and that sort of thing. Because that would, over time, that'd improve the service, because I know, I know you're talking about whether people can do several things at once, but quite often, that sort of thing, people want to get done now, and that's what their issue is. Whereas other things, like, you know, when you're talking about reviews and benefits, because I, I came from a council where they set up the Anglia Revenue Partnership, which was sort of, at one time was, you know, sort of the gold standard partnership on how they were dealing with things. And, and it's just making sure that we learn from best practice as well, and, and make sure that we're not reinventing, you know, trying to invent things that have already been done really well. And it's, you know, I'm quite happy, I'd be quite happy to come down and see, of course, but it's also whether you're looking at how other people, how other councils and other organisations are doing it better as well, so that we can, you know, we can take their best practice and move it on. So that, they're the sort of things I'd, I'd like to see when you're doing things and seeing reporting back on that basis.
Thank you, councillor Huggan. I think I'm going to take a little bit of time myself as chair, if you don't mind, and it will be brief. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your presentation. And it is good to know, as a, as an elected member, that work is being done in this area, because we've all got bags full of casework, which does of, quite often revolve around the customer experience in various areas of the council. But I would also like to thank the staff that are actually on the frontline, working in our customer service departments, especially over this last 18 months, where they will have redeployed, the work that they've done's changed, the pressure. And I've, and I actually have worked in a call centre, and it is a very high-pressured environment, and it's an unnatural environment with false light. Often, you don't see much daylight, and you don't get much fresh air. So I think looking also at the health and wellbeing of our staff is really important for the outcome, for the work that they want to achieve. So I think that's really important. What I'm getting from today is that there were, there were three key areas and one key ask. So there was the area around the improvement to payments and benefits. There was the customer experience there. There was an area around customer complaints and customer service around repairs and maintenance. And was the, there was the ask of us to get more involved in the standards and expectations piece of work. Now, as a committee, we have a role to play in finding out more information and being able to work with officers on recommendations. And that won't happen tonight in this room from this presentation. So what I would propose is that if people have got a specific area of interest around those key areas, that we work with Alice to set up some extra working groups or sessions where we work with officers to find out more information, and then be able to give further recommendations. Because while the information being given to us today has been, has been really good, like councillor Garbutt said, there is some data issues that we might want to dig in. And I think most of us should actually, if we can, and if we feel comfortable, visit the contact centre and speak to frontline workers as well about their experience. I think we've heard from members of the public very clearly as elected members what, what their experiences are. So I would like to ask councillor McDonald and officers, what you, what you, your, your, be clear about what your ask of us is. Because we are a committee where we are, I know we're not making decisions, but in what, if we are going to give recommendations, some of us might want more information, and we might want to break out into smaller, smaller groups.
And can I just suggest, it's up to you, obviously, in how the committee wants, wants to work. But it seemed to me as though, yes, you want to do a little bit more, look into it a bit more. But what I think would be helpful is, having done that, if we can come back with any overarching recommendations, particularly around the sorts of things that we think are fundamental in terms of what our standards should actually be. So aspirational, but also achievable. So I, I think that would be, you know, a really good, good piece of work. And then sort of, I, I personally, if I was in your position, I would want to put pressure on, on, on us to be demonstrating improvement as well over a period of time. So those are the two things I, I would suggest. One is a sort of an ask of you, and the other is actually being humble and saying that we need to reciprocate in terms of, of, of delivering as well. So those are the two things that are, that's my suggestion, but it's up to you guys what you think about it. And I don't know what the officers think about that actually either.
I think the kind of approach that's been outlined would be really helpful. I think a period of, of kind of understanding what the, what the, what the issues are from different perspectives would be, would be, would be really helpful actually. And more than happy to facilitate those visits to the, to the contact centre, to perhaps spend a little bit of time walking through some of the data, to, I think, actually showing what that customer feedback that we got. And I know, I know it's a couple of years old now, but, but I think it's really important that we, we understand that, because it's a really kind of rich source of information that is worth, is worth spending some time getting into really. And then perhaps understanding what some of, where some of those specific areas of challenge are. Because, you know, councillor McDonald has said, there's, there's no, there is no quick fix on some of these things, but we do need to fix some of these things. So, you know, we, we need to be working towards solutions which are ultimately going to make some difference. So if that looked like, you know, one or more sessions with, with all or some of this committee, that I can help facilitate in any way, I'd, I'd be more than happy to do so, with, with a view to bringing something back that, yes, we can, we can agree to, that we can use to implement into the, into the whole council and, and make sure that when we are, you know, because the, the three areas that are highlighted, they're, they're typically iceberg to some extent. But if we can make some improvements in some of those areas, and we can continue to use that same approach for all future service design, I think we're, I think we're on the right path then.
Can I just add to that? And, and that is that the focus is always on the call centre. But I think the point is actually that the call centre is just the front end for the rest of the council. So it is quite important that we see that in, in context, which is I suppose why, why we've been talking about those wider standards, that, that we as a council can agree, and it just doesn't apply so, solely to the call centre. Thank you.
Thank you. I think, I think we'd all like to just say a big thank you to officers, and if you, you're all right, you're all right to leave now, and then we'll, if you want to get off your tea, he's getting on a bit. And then I think if we could have a conversation about how we as a committee envisage us working together on these areas, that'd be great. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your patience. I know it's getting on a little bit, but I think it was a really good presentation. And I think it, thank you, Kate, for bringing it to us with your offices. And it is clear that a lot of work has gone on. And I think, like I said before, I am reassured that, that some work is happening. But as I said, as a committee, we've got some work to do now if we want to bring forward recommendations to officers. One of those areas is very clear around the standards and expectations and how we want to do that. And I think although we're all really busy, and I don't expect everyone to want to work on all the key areas, what I'm asking is, is there anybody interested in working with officers around the expectations and standards, so that we can bring that back at a later date as part of this committee?
I think there's quite a lot of suggestions coming out of what we'd like to get involved in. And I'm wondering if perhaps we could have an email with them all highlighted, and then when we can see all of them, we can pick. Because I'm getting a bit confused now, you know, with every item, there's been, if you want to get involved, email. And I think perhaps it would be quite good to have a summary by you or by Alice to say, these are the areas we need to work on. If you're interested, contact me. And then we can think about it and decide which area we want to look at.
Yep. Alice, do you want to just highlight what's being discussed and the areas that we'd want to look at? Thank you.
Yes, certainly, Chair. I think, so you've, you've, most of what you've been hearing today's been around customer experience and the contact centres. So there's a, there's a suggestion actually to visit the contact centre, which, you know, is something that can be arranged. And then after that, it's very much focusing on the standards and, and expectations, and particularly about improvements. And I think one of the things that also came out that I heard from the questions was around, and the answers actually was around the sort of data around customer complaints. And there is something about the relationship with housing repairs and, and maintenance. So there's quite a lot in there. But I, I hear that the, the primary is you're being asked if you would really help with kind of setting out what you think would be good standards and expectations, and, and finding a way to do that. And there are a couple of ways you can do it in small working groups. Or you could think about having a, a kind of, a bit of a public evidence gathering session where you input as members of this committee, but maybe you hear from others as well. But that has to be carefully managed, so it doesn't become an opportunity for the big gripes to come in from the usual suspects. But, you know, that's, that's important. And then I think the other, you know, so my list of emails to you, it's around, yes, the customer service, so it's standards and expectations, it's a visit to the contact centre, checking in with you which of the three different areas you might like to be consider, that, that the chair highlighted, which was improvements to the benefits, kind of call line as it were, customer complaints, repairs and maintenance, and then finding out more on standards. The other issues that have come through are around the budget. So that's the future approach to priority budgeting, whether you want to be involved in a small group that actually starts to think about what, what those priorities might be for this particular themed transitional committee, and how that would play into future years. So that's about the policy-based budget that councillor Kate McDonald mentioned. And I'm also, I think, chasing you a little bit for, yeah, just a list of what you might consider to be your key priorities. So there's a few little small work groups that will come through in an email. I think sensible is that, yes, I'll pull them together, I'll talk to the chair. And then I think, as the deputies just said, you can sort of put forward your preferences. But it, it felt like there was an opportunity for some smaller group working on both the future approach to priority budgeting and on the, the customer experience. And I think you've got a very strong suggestion around standards and expectations, which I think is actually quite an important role for you as a, a committee. Because I made a little side note of how, you know, if you get the sort of call centre, if you get all of the contact right, it might reduce some of the, the kind of individual casework that you find yourself involved in.
Thank you. So, so not very much then, for our little committee. Thank you, Penny. Do you want to come in?
I'd just like to ask Chair that when we do this, we say how these working groups would be held. We've got so much on at the moment, that if we know it's teams, it might mean that we can fit it in, because we can do, you know. But if it's a naturality and we have to get somewhere, I can't squeeze that in. So we're, obviously, a visit to the call centre, that's obvious. But if we can know the other ones, it allows us to organise our time better. Thank you.
Thank you, Penny. And, and, and we are, and we are, we are a group working together, so we will make it possible for anybody to engage in this however we can. So, yeah, it's not down to me or Zahira or Julian to, to decide, Christine, sorry, to decide how this is going to happen. It's for all of us to decide how we're going to do this together. So if we'd rather work via Teams or Zoom or face-to-face in a coffee shop, whatever, bit of cake and coffee, then, then I'm up for any of that really. And I'm sure there are enough of us to, to make this work and bring something back. So as an action then, I'd like to ask Alice to send those emails out with those areas of work, and also ask for feedback for how you think today's gone and how we're going to work together as well. Has anybody got any other comments on this area? Because I'd like to move on, on the gender, if that's okay. So Alice, we're going on to work plan and ways of working.
Thank you, Chair. I think that actually ways of working, you've almost just discussed in the last few minutes. Thank you, Chair. I think that actually ways of working, you've almost just discussed in the last few minutes about smaller groups, a single kind of email that explains what the options are, what's out there. And also considering the ways of working, as councillor Baker's just said, in terms of virtual or not. All I will say on that is when you're, as a committee meeting in public, to consider sort of fuller agendas like this, the regulations now say that you do have to be face-to-face. We're no longer in the period of the emergency Covid regulations that were set by government that allowed full-on virtual meetings for council and all committee meetings. But outside of that, there is nothing to say that smaller groups, if they're not necessary to be in public, there's no reason why they can't be held virtual. And potentially there are ways of evidence gathering virtually, including the public. So these are things we'll have to work through. So I think you've kind of touched on your ways of working that's actually in this work plan report. And it is for you as a committee to determine that. Your work plan, page 34, it's fairly light and that's intentional in a way because as you've discovered today, if we put lots of themes in or you choose lots of different themes, you're going to run out of time because there's a lot of in-depth already coming out from the two items that you've heard from today, which were the first two on that list. So there's only one sort of outstanding from that list, which is performance management. And again, I wouldn't be surprised if once you get the report back on that, you realise that you actually have a fairly full agenda with some offline working but also making sure all of that comes back into a in-public arena too. But if there are a few other points that people wanted to raise, it's through the chair.
So does anyone have anything that they'd like to raise on that or are we all okay with that? Well, thank you, everyone. Just check our agenda. We don't have any, do we have any public questions or petitions? No? Okay. Thank you, everyone. I would like to extend the offer that I'm always contactable and available for feedback, myself and the co-chair and vice-chair. We really want to make this work, so we really do want to work together. So if we can keep the dialogue going between ourselves, I think that's really important, even between meetings. Thank you, councillor McDonald.
I'd just like to congratulate the chair on how well she's conducted this first meeting of the transitional committee. Well done.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for behaving yourselves.